All right, I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
I'm here.
All right. It looks like we have one item, which is to interview for the El Rapa Board with AJ. It looks like it's the staff person, so. AJ?
My uncomfortable entry to camera life. Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Thank you for your time this evening. Our El Rapa Board position for Springfield Representative. We have two interviews tonight. In your packet, you receive the applications of three. Mr. Brandt has been removed from the candidate pool because he actually lives outside of the city limits, which is a requirement of the bylaws. And we've, we appreciated his application and interest. And I had a very good conversation with him and encouraged him to, to see about other opportunities that have at-large positions that he may be able to apply for. Our recruitment ran from August 11th through September 17th. This position was vacated after the current member Gabrielle Gudera resigned in July because she moved out of the area or, or out of the city limits. This particular term is a two-year term and will go till November of 2023. And with the two applicants that you have, which I can see are on the meeting tonight. If you choose either of the applicants, you can ratify their position or appoint that one of them to the position at your October 4th meeting. So I will stop talking. If you have any questions before we get started, I'm happy to answer any of them.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, with two applicants, I'm just gonna go ahead and ask all the questions. I know that you guys are gonna really just be, you know, running to ask questions on your own. But it seems like it works better in this, in this format. So AJ, I think we're ready for the first applicant.
Perfect. So our first applicant is going to be Mr. Fitzpatrick, and I apologize, I'm gonna stop sharing for a moment. I'll try not to make everyone sick. But my controls move when I share my screen, so bear with me here. So Terry, we do have you. If you unmute your microphone.
Just did.
Perfect. And if you're able to share your camera, that would be wonderful, but we understand if that doesn't work.
That's what I'm trying to, trying to figure out. It's my, it seems to be a block, but I don't know what the issue is. I apologize, they have to, okay, here it goes. Start my video.
There you are. Hello, Terry.
Hello, hello.
So the game plan for the day, usually we would do this as round robin. But with this being remote, I'm just gonna read the questions to you and then they'll give people a chance to take some notes and we won't really hand, you know, be able to hand, hand off the interview to anybody. So if you're ready, I'm gonna go ahead and get started as soon as the questions come back, AJ. All right. Are you ready, Terry?
I am ready. Go right ahead.
Fantastic. So why are you interested in serving on the El Rapa Board of Directors?
Well, several things. One, in general, the air quality in Lake County is, is good. With a few exceptions. And one of the reasons I know that is because I've been following the air quality for years. Approximately 10 years ago, I was diagnosed with a lung disease caused by asbestos. When I was in the Navy and I got this, did a lot of research, lot of, gathered a lot of information about what affects my lungs, and that brought me to El Rapa. And it's been a great source of information. And one of the things that I would like to do is continue the scientific study and data that El Rapa has been doing. Because if you look at it, for example, their 2020 report, particulate matter and things like that are down even when the, the city of Eugene population is rising. So I'd like to make the, you know, the air as clean as possible and keep it, keep it going. I've been very impressed with the work they've done.
Okay, describe your professional and personal experience as it relates to your desire to become an El Rapa Board Member.
Oh, okay. Well, as I have already stated, I was in the US Navy. And I served aboard a ship where I was exposed to asbestos. Of course, at the time, I was 17 years old and didn't know what asbestos was or what it did or anything like that. So my lungs started really affecting me probably 15 years ago. It was my wife who actually first noticed it and so then I've, I've got, I'm currently 100% disabled through the VA system. I have a very strong interest in especially asbestos. Because it's one of those things that, you know, it's, it's easy to talk about. You know, we can all have empathy, but until you actually experience it, it's very difficult to, to understand the limitations and the things that happened like that with asbestos. Following, I was following my time in the Navy. I was hired as a police officer. I was a police officer for 24 years. I rose to the rank of Detective Sergeant. I ran the Financial Crimes Unit for many years. I worked on various committees and boards, not only in the state level, but the city level. Also worked with student groups at the U of O around issues such as loud parties, sexual assault, things like that. And I gained a lot of experience in dealing with different people. And one of the things that I've always tried is, even those that we may not agree upon, everybody should be heard. Everybody gets a voice. And as long as they have that voice, hopefully, we can understand each other a little bit, not be as as angry at each other as we seem to be in our current political situation. Following my time in the Police Department, I volunteered Springfield BFW for five years as a Veteran Service Officer. That was somebody who helps veterans apply for and gain the benefits that they've earned. I've done everything from life insurance quotes for veterans to appeals. I even wrote, my investigation was one that, believe it or not, changed VA policy towards Agent Orange and Vietnam veterans regarding their exposure to it. And these have given me a great opportunity to understand how to work with people, how codes work. Not only, you know, legal codes, but administrative codes and those things. And one of the things that really drives me is even though I don't have the physical ability to do what I used to do, but I still have the desire to serve the community and serve the city of Springfield where I choose to live. You know, when I moved into the area 30 years ago, I deliberately chose to move to Springfield. And I've raised my daughter there. My wife and I have lived there for over 30 years and it's a great community and I just want to make it a little bit better.
All right, perfect. I know you've covered a lot of your air quality and sort of community concerns. I'm just gonna kind of open up. Do you have any other sort of general areas of concern around community development or the environment that you want to speak to?
Yes, I do. There are, as I'm sure everyone here knows, there's a wide variety of opinions on the environment in general and air quality. There are people in our community that feel that all development should be stopped. And I disagree with that. I think that we can have responsible development along with keeping the air cleaner. And as long as we continue to use the technology that's available and we continue to set reasonable standards, I think we can have both. And people may disagree, but we can have development and have clean air. And again, the 2020 report shows that even though the city of Springfield has gained in population, air quality has improved.
Outside of the monthly El Rapa meetings, what amount of volunteer time would you have to offer to work, for work involving the El Rapa Board?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem at all. I'm currently a member of the Board of Directors at Pacific Cascade Federal Credit Union. I'm in the middle of a three-year term. That takes me approximately anywhere from three to six hours a month. And our monthly meetings are, do not conflict with the El Rapa meeting. So that shouldn't be a problem. And the rest of my time, I've got a lot of honeydews that my wife has me do and, and I stay busy. But I shouldn't have any problem with the time issues.
Can you give us an example of your experience working with the committee?
Absolutely. Two examples I had. One, when I was a fairly new officer in Eugene, I was assigned to the downtown, I mean, I apologize, I was assigned to the University of Oregon Patrol. And the big issue at that time was loud parties, which I'm sure it's continuing to be a big issue. And how does the police respond to that? How does the university community respond? What is their expectations and how things get done? I worked together with U of O, Department of Public Safety, different various groups, and we worked on different things. We didn't come up with any great solutions, but we did come up with expectations of what the police can do, what the police can't do, what the student population could do. Because I think I shocked them when I gave them the light, I told them flat out, the police don't want to come to your loud party. But when it's loud and there's, you know, people that are defecating in your neighbor's yard and things are getting thrown around, that's when we get called. So we spent a lot of time educating, trying to get them to understand why we come, how we come, when we do, what our expectations are. And we also worked with a different program about keg enforcement, which, I don't know, I know none of you guys ever went to a keg party when you were in college, but we were able to do some enforcement of that. And we actually dropped loud party calls in the West University area by 65% after a year. And we talked to a lot of the student groups and what the feedback we got was that, yeah, you know, we're teaching, we're trying to teach our people to keep it a little bit quieter, so you guys don't come. And that's great. We've got better things to do. Also, things that I worked with, well, assigned to the Downtown Association, Downtown Safety Committee. I worked with everybody, including the Business Association, homeless advocates who were, would come to the meetings. Various nonprofits at times would come to the meetings. We had everything from business owners to neighborhood associations. And we all got together and we were discussing the various issues around that. Again, we, we came up with a few small solutions. The issue around homelessness is probably not going to get solved just by a small group of people. But I think there was a lot of understanding in people, at least we hopefully didn't see each other as adversaries all the time anymore. And one of the reasons was, I always let people voice their opinion, even if I voiced, even if I disagreed with it.
Please name one way you can help inform our community about El Rapa or El Rapa projects.
Well, first of all, I think COVID has really put a a hurt on the outreach that El Rapa has done. I've seen many things that they've done and I really agree with them, such as going to, you know, trade shows, business associations, civic groups, things like that. One thing that I did find when I was working in detectives was it always amazed me, we sat there, we waited for the media to come to us for a long time. But I find if we go, if we have a story and we go to them and do more than just put out a press release and we say, hey, here is, you know, somebody who's willing to get in front of the microphone, give an interview. I found the media, for the most part, is very attuned to that. They love that. They love that some, somebody will step forward and, and give an interview. And that's one thing I would do. And another thing I think that would be helpful is for people like me and people that have lung diseases. I love the El Rapa website, but it's limited. It should, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but let's add links to the best household cleaners, for example, in your house. I don't know how many people know about that. What, you know, certain cleaners can affect you if you have asthma, certain are better for you. Open it up a little bit more, make it a little more holistic approach.
Perfect. How do you think the work of El Rapa Board will improve our community?
Well, I think it's already improved the community greatly. And one of the things is following the scientific method and following what the data shows us. For example, the recent article in the Register Guard about Seneca. I know there was a lot of different understandings about that, but El Rapa went above and beyond by, by having the public meeting, even when they didn't have to. And they showed the people, and probably some people there that didn't agree with the decision, but showed them, this is why we do it, this is why we did it. And I do believe most people, not all, but most people, if given the opportunity, you talk to them straight and say, this is what we did, this is why we did it. Most people will understand it and they will support it.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. So the plan from here on is that we're gonna interview the next candidate and then we'll, we will discuss, you know, our choices and somebody will get back to you from, from there.
All right. Thank you very much for your time and I really appreciate it. You know, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Have a great.
Mayor, we are working now to give William Freeland access. It'll be just a moment. And Mr. Freeland, it looks like you can unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Can you see me?
Not yet.
Okay, let's see if this will do it. I'm getting a cannot start video. Unfortunately, let's see. I do have my camera on. It's still giving me a fail to start the video camera. You do. And I'm not quite sure how to get that on.
We'll give it probably one more chance here and then we may just have to wing it from there.
Okay. Okay, hang on. Let's me try one more time, see if it works out. And I'm still getting a failure on it, even though my screen or my camera says it's on. Okay.
Well, let's try, we got a little bit of time, so we're gonna try one more thing for you and then we'll, we'll see if we can have you drop the meeting and then come back in. And if you get back on here and it's still not working, I'll start firing the questions your way.
Okay. See what.
Mr. Freeland, are you seeing a request from us to start your video?
Yes. It, it says the co-host has asked you to start your video. When I hit that, that is when it says it failed to start the video camera. So let's turn my camera off and see if that comes up. So here, I'm gonna try and turn my camera off and see if the request will. Nope, it's not working.
Neil, maybe have him leave and come back.
Yeah, would you mind, Mr. Freeland, dropping off and then we'll, we'll bring you back up. Same link to get back in.
I will do that. I'll get back on the link. Well, now I've got a square with my name up. Let's see if I can start the video. Okay, I'll drop off and see if I can start it again.
We'll see you in a minute.
Okay.
I will have to also, I'm frozen. I feel like we're pausing for station identification. This city council meeting is brought to you by Zoom. Thank you, Amy. It looks good now.
And it looks like we're still just waiting for Mr. Freeland to be able to get reconnected. Still haven't gotten the copyright to the Jeopardy theme song, so I apologize for the awkward silences.
That's so old, it's probably expired, Amy.
I don't know that it's in the public domain. Has anybody ever read a book called Endurance? It was written about in 2000, apparently about this guy's Antarctic expedition and he got stuck in the ice with his crew for a year. And they all made it. They hiked out across the ocean.
When, when you say trapped in the ice, do you mean that they were literally mired in the ice or?
Yeah, the boat was frozen in the ice.
Oh, Lord. Okay. Oh, okay. So the boat was frozen and they were sort of stuck with each other. I got it. Yeah.
Is that a metaphor for this meeting? Is that what that's about, really?
No, I'm just sharing, I'm just sharing, trying to pass the time until, until I can get us back on track. Don't read too much into it, Corey.
Hey, Corey, I, I think it's impossible not to take it as a metaphor.
All right. Hello. Well, we can see you now. Do you go by William or Bill?
Uh, Bill's fine.
Well.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay. So the game plan for this evening is, is I'm gonna ask the questions and we'll, we'll just go down the whole order and the group's gonna take the notes from there and then we'll, we'll discuss from there. So if you're, if you're ready to get started, I'll and I'll start firing away here.
Yeah, I am. I listened to the previous interviewee, so.
Oh, perfect. Then you're a pro at this already.
Oh, I won't say that.
Why are you interested in serving on the El Rapa Board of Directors?
Well, in particular, when I saw the announcement, I thought, hey, this is a way to continue to be able to serve my community in the area of environmental protection, as I did during my career. And my career was almost 38 years with the federal, in federal service. And that basically, oh, I retired in 2011. But a lot of the, the work that I did, although I was a trained biologist, I really got into the, the overall picture of environmental protection. And I hope you, I also included my resume with my application. I hope you all have been able to see that. It used to be a much more in detailed resume. I kind of put it down, but it's still about six pages long. And so I've had a lot of experience in doing overall environmental protection, but air quality was one of them. And in particular, when I was down at the Yucca Mountain Project at the Geological Repository, I was working the, the field environmental program out there. And because I was also going down the test tunnel and taking VIPs down the test tunnel, I was included in and have been for the past 30 years, the monitoring program, both whole health and what in particular was respiratory issues that came from, or might have come from the project, which of course has included cancer. So far, I am free of that. So that's, that's good. But that is one of the things that really interested me in looking at air quality. And of course, I chose Springfield because I do believe it's an area that is a little more interesting in the way of, of the community itself. Eugene, of course, can, can look at its university background and, and all the people that are that live over there, which is great. I love Eugene. I was over there for a number of years after I retired. I lived up by Costco. But I chose to buy a house here in Springfield, mainly because I like the area better. I'm in an area that is a very mixed community. I love the area. It's, I love my neighbors. It's, it's kind of just fun being over here. And this is the, of course, I have lived here in this house for four years. But I've also been in the Pacific Northwest for my career, pretty much since I got here to go to school back in 1970. And that day, September 19th, when I came into Oregon, it felt like I was coming home. So when I retired and I was up at the, up in Alaska at the time that I retired from federal service, I came back here to Eugene and I thought, this is where I'm staying.
Well, great. So describe your professional and personal experiences as it relates to your desire to become an El Rapa Board Member. I know you've touched on some of it, but this gives you a chance to sort of expound on places that, that are particularly relevant.
Let me take it in two parts here. And the first part would be the professional part. And you said that you had my resume there and that responded, you know, with my professional experience and training in the area of environmental protection. But let me give you a short example of that, of actually what I've done in the field. And this is kind of short and I've got many other examples that I could give you ad nauseam. But during my work with Bonneville Power Administration, I had a chance to investigate a, an incident where oil impregnated air filters at the Columbia Falls, Montana aluminum plant were contaminated with PCBs. Everybody knows PCBs, polychlorinated by phenols. Everybody knows PCBs polychlorinated by phenols. Bonneville had quite a few of them and one of my duties was to go out to one of our area offices and. Basically, we started inventory all inventorying all of our PCBs. And that led to a program of getting rid of PCBs. But going back to the the aluminum plant. Every time they changed the oil in their air filters, they would test it for PCBs. They would find. PCBs there. And of course, that brought EPA in. And so they got in touch with me and we talked about things, but an obvious source of their PCBs. Was our PCB capacitors in the adjacent substation. Of course, capacitors have a tendency to blow up and. Missed a lot of the the internal. Oil PCB mix into the air and that's where it was an obvious source that we thought was contaminating their air filters. Well, based on that speculation, BPA got rid of those capacitors. We found out later, or a little bit later, that. The aluminum plants' air filters were still being contaminated. And so we did a thorough search, both within the plant and around the surrounding area. For sources of polychlorinated byphenols. We didn't find any. And I did a lot of coordinating with EPA from their Montana office. And the the final conclusion that we came to was that. Those air filters were actually cleaning up ambient PCB levels. That were coming at us just in the atmosphere. Kind of shocked all of us, but that's the only thing, then that would be the Columbia Plant. BPA and EPA. We all came to that conclusion. And in many respects, that helped the plant out because EPA was kind of breathing down their necks to clean up things. But then EPA kind of backed off and said, hey, let's just keep monitoring that. And see how much cleanup we can do. So that's an example on the professional side of things. And you can see that I did an awful lot of coordination with both the plant. Within our own system and BPA and with EPA. And that's not an easy job.
Yeah, and it seems like you've had a lot of sort of really technical experience, but so could you maybe? Talk about the areas of concern you have specifically, you know, around air quality or community development or the environment in general?
Right, I can do that. Actually, I was gonna get to part two and that was the personal end of it. So your question actually goes to that.
Oh, excellent.
I've always been concerned with the dust and the pollen and the ash and all. The air contaminants that seem to settle on my cars here in Springfield. I mean, it's 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 hard. Of course, today's the day when everything washes off. But when you come out in the morning and you see just a covering of dust, a covering of whatever on your car and you realize that, yes. Our air quality is good. But it could be better. And that's especially. This last year with the Holiday Farms Fire and the fires that we're seeing this year. Has been a real concern of mine on the personal level. What are we really breathing? And taking into our lungs? You know, is it always coming from industrial sources? Is it coming from? The environmental pollutants such as pollen, the dust from the valley? I mean, I started my career. Helping farmers here in the Lynn Lane area back in the seventies. And I learned a lot about that. And of course, at that time, we were still burning fields. So I've I've basically been able to see our air quality issues throughout my career. And of course, I'm still seeing it. We're not perfect down here. We are good. But I do think we can get better.
Outside the monthly El Rapa Board meetings, what type of volunteer time do you have to offer for work involving the El Rapa Board?
Well, currently, I'm a volunteer on ODFW's Fish Screening Board Advisory Task Force. And they meet three times a year, so I don't see that as being a interfering. Subject. I also volunteer for four hours each week and it's been Friday afternoons, but I can easily change that if necessary, but I'm an interpretive host. With Oregon State Parks. Thompson's Mills. Heritage site up at Shed. I don't know if you guys have ever been up there, but it is a fascinating place and the history there is amazing. So I thought I'd volunteer there. So I do about four hours a week. But it's it's flexible. Really, all you can see is after all of that, I can work weeks, like weekdays and weekends, you know, the only thing I have have. Other than that is to do my laundry.
Can you give us an example of your experience working with a committee?
With just committees, I can give you examples of that.
Yeah, just in general about how you approach committee work.
Yeah, when I was living down in Eagle Point, I volunteered as a. A member. For the Parks and Recreation Board for the City of Eagle Point. I had done that when I was living up in Squim, Washington, working at the Olympic National Park with their Citizens Advisory. Committee, so that that kept me. Very interested in working on boards. I don't know if it was fortunate or unfortunate, but it was definitely fun. The guys on the Eagle Point Parks and Rec Commission voted me as chairman. And I ended up doing that for five years. That that was amazing to work with that group because we were going through revising their master plans for parks, parks and rest recreation. And of course, that had had kind of come to easy for me because I was working the master plan for the Olympic National Park. When I was up there in Squim, Washington. So and there's there've been other times too, I've I have. Organized and run. Over a hundred NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act meetings for the government. And literally across the country, I certainly ran the thirty public meetings. For the Geological Repository down at Yucca Mountain. And that was all over the country. Very enlightening and I can give you stories left and right from that. But I was also the lead in staff to BLM's. Advisory Committee on the Secure Rural Schools Title II expenditures. And we we basically gave out over seventeen million dollars over six years. So I have been, I have led, I have organized, I have led from behind. I have stood out in front of the public. I've had the public in my face yelling at me. And there are times when it's hard not to yell back, but you do have to keep your cool on that one. So I'm I'm. Very experienced. With the public. As well as committees.
So please name one way you would help inform our community about El Rapa and or El Rapa projects.
Well, when I first started looking at El Rapa on the website, I I started noticing they have a great website. I am really impressed with it. There are a lot of connections and links to other sites. It is one site that I go to now and again, just to see what the air quality in the area is, especially with all the wildfires that we've been having here. I do think that they need to put in a link to the NCWeb. National website so that they can get little literally real time information on wildfires. I also check that. Website quite often. But you know, I'm impressed with their Q and As, I'm impressed that they have podcasts, that they have alert signups. Tips, publications, and I I'm impressed that they have a citizen scientist program. Of course, I am a scientist. I'm also, I won't say that I'm a political animal, but I definitely have had to deal directly with. The politicos are representatives and all. So I I am really impressed and I'm more than willing, once I learn more of. The El Rapa programs and and of course, I'd be have to be talking to staff to get intimately involved in that. I don't mind standing up either with staff or. In place of staff so that we can get information to the public. I mean, I'm a good meeting organizer. I know how to collaborate and form cooperative efforts. And I'm also good at mediation if it comes to that.
So how do you think the work of El Rapa will improve our community?
Well, I do think that the El Rapa Board has got to take. A stance that says are there regulations and programs have to be. Have to, they have to ensure that it helps the program or helps the communities grow. And I wanted to mention that before because I I really have tried during my career and my own thoughts is that. Government, and I do look at El Rapa as part of the government, it needs to operate as a, it can't operate as a business. But it can operate in a businesslike fashion with. Input from both business and the social and economic parts of the people in the community. And that means the board has got to make sure that they ensure that the regulations and programs are understandable. That they're transparent. And that there's a. Ready opportunity for the public. To be part of it. To be able to get to them, talk with them and have input to them. The board really, in my view, has got to have ensure the the Balancing Act. That provides the needed. Issues, the needed. Solutions to the problems that we do view with air quality. And I do believe it really is incumbent upon the board. To be part of that and to help that balancing act. Between our our social and our economic end of things.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much. That was the last question. Okay, we're gonna let you go and then we're gonna have a discussion among ourselves and then we will get back. Somebody will get back to you about what our decision is. Very nice to meet you. Thank you so much for your time.
It was nice seeing you all and and thank you for bearing with me as I go through Zoom.
Take care.
Okay, take care.
All right. Who wants to start? Joe.
Well, thank you very much. I listen to both them very intently. I can tell you, you know, what the needs of the board are, what kind of, what what type of. If there's weaknesses and strengths in the board, et cetera, but. I think I like Terry over the last one. We have tons of academia. Already at El Rapa, we have scientists that work at El Rapa, we have. Lots of input, we get a lot of input already. I think it would be great to have the perspective of a citizen coming in. With their own concerns and their own story as to why they want to be El Rapa and I think that. Terry would not have any preconceived notions in regards to air quality, et cetera. So I think that would that would for sure be my obvious pick. I appreciate the the academia and 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 all the immense knowledge that. The last candidate had, but but I think as far as for the needs of the board, I think the the first person we interviewed is is really feels that bill much better.
Leonard.
Thanks, Sean. I I I found it sort of interesting that both of these candidates had. An interest in air quality due to illnesses that they had that they had suffered and. They also have very impressive resumes. As Joe said, Mr. Freeland has thirty seven years as an environmental scientist with the government and. As far as I could tell, Mr. Fitzpatrick, while certainly qualified for a great number of things, including financial crime and that kind of thing. Doesn't have anything directly relevant to it and I I value expertise, so I'd like to see Mr. Freeland appointed.
All right, Corey.
Thank you. I mostly just want to say that I really appreciated, actually, all three of the folks who applied. Because they all seemed really interested and qualified and passionate and I just really appreciate that. And for the two folks who came and interviewed tonight and answered questions, I just appreciate that we have folks in Springfield that are so passionate about this and have so much experience that they're willing to give. And I hope that they hear that, that I really am grateful that those are our neighbors. I am. More inclined, although I think both of them will be great and. I'm more inclined with the first one, Terry Fitzpatrick. Just in, I was just thinking in terms of, you know, someone in their experience of working with a lot of folks with different personalities and being on a board or a committee or a commission. Folks who can kind of find the conversations that you can have can be really helpful in those situations. I appreciate. Counselor Pictionary sharing the makeup of the board because that kind of swayed me a little more, realizing that there is a lot of that. Scientific and and other information on the board currently and so to bring someone in who's got some sort of diverse experience could be nice. So that's my opinion on it. I can't find my hand to raise.
Go ahead, Mary.
I I I thought both of them were highly qualified to have a position on the board. I I listened to both of them and I appreciate as much as I appreciate the expertise on the part of Mr. Freeland. We do have, as Joe said, the the expertise on the board members and also the staff. From El Rapa. And so I was looking at. What what impressed me with Mr. With Mr. Fitzpatrick was a community connection. His ability to connect with the community, his ability to hear what the community says, as well as his own personal. Experience. We don't always have the opportunity to have somebody that has. A direct connection to a board like that. And I think that as far as El Rapa is concerned, at the expertise level, El Rapa is really good. And I think the community connection, the personal connection on the part of Mr. Freeland. I mean, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Is is one that I I don't want to lose. I think it's a good connection.
Okay, Damian.
So even before the interviews, I was reading through the packets and one thing that kind of came to mind is. Who can say what they need to say in the shortest period of time? Within an application and so. One, of course, both went over and said, see attached, but to me, it's like. You should be able to put everything within that block or we need to think about redoing the application regardless. I don't know, like I was, I've just been trained that, you know, you use a space that was allotted. And so people were able to sell themselves in the shortest space are ones that want to stick out to me. So that that's one thing, but then two, yeah, I mean, I. You know. Fitzpatrick is a veteran, so you know, that that adds a level of diversity, but then. Seemed pretty genuine, seemed to, you know, want to make change. It was less about him and more about. The community, you know, just when he was talking about his different experiences. So I really appreciated that.
Steve.
Whatever. Talk about impressive resumes. How do we, and how do, we just don't usually get that with committees nowadays, but I guess we are. I said something the other day, since I used to volunteer for committees, I didn't have resumes like that. And right nowadays, I don't think I'd be selected. So I'm lucky to, I'm lucky to go out there. Anyway. Freeland, boy, he's he's got some stories about Yucca that I would like to hear, but. I believe that we need to select somebody to represent Springfield on that committee that could. Integrate with the public, talk to the public better than than in science. And though he can still do that, so Fitzpatrick would be my selection and because of his people skills, but Mr. Freeland. And he's he's got him too, but I think there's too much, too much directed towards science. But I think there's too much, too much directed towards science in his respect.
Thanks, Steve. I had Terry over, over Bill too. And really, it came down to the, what the rest of the board looks like among the, the citizens group. You know, I just felt like somebody who had a little bit different of an experience and still would bring a lot to the table. There's a lot, there's a lot of really good science-minded folks on that board right now. And just having another person that's simply been brought to this is a, is an issue through their personal experience. I think it's gonna help wind the board out. The one thing I would recommend is, is Joe, like, don't they have a science advisory panel?
Oh, yeah. If you want scientists in science, you go, just go ahead and hang out over at L Rappa and you will get lots of that. Now, they have a, they have a Citizens Advisory Board that is packed, packed with, with experts in the field and very technical. They've got a consultant on full-time dealing with some very large grants that have been, been awarded to L Rappa and Oak Ridge area. The Oak Ridge, the L Rappa staff themselves are highly technical and provide highly technical data to the board. And the board really, at times gets overwhelmed with technical data. And sometimes I have to tell staff, okay, in layman's term, what are you asking us again? So I, I get it. And, and that's why a rap, I think, has run so well is because we got a ton of people that are working there that are truly experts in the field. And the, the board is, is got a, a good balance going on right now. And I think that with this, in this conversation, Corey brought it out. And I, I didn't even think about it most terms too, is that Terry has got such a diverse background in regards to, with his work in, in his past one. He worked with a ton of, of isolated populations and people at risk and all these different exposures, different types of things in the community, which leaves him, I think, completely open to whatever kind of information is coming at L Rappa. He's gonna be able to listen to it and he'll be able to ask the right questions too. So that was a good, good observation. So, yeah.
I, yeah. So I think we're, AJ, we're saying, you know, that it's Terry. And then I think we have to take action in the next meeting about it. And then, so like, I would save Mr. Freeland's resume for a Rappas, you know, if they've got a citizen spot, a scientist spot over there that, you know.
I was just thinking, we have, there's, there is some of those openings that may be available, so I'm keeping his name.
Exactly. All right. Perfect. You need anything else from us, AJ?
No, thank you very, very much.
All right. This was our one item for the evening, so please enjoy getting done early. We will talk to you guys next week. We're adjourned.
We're like done for the night, right?
We're done.
We're done. Run before.
I'm gonna write this down. Woo. Good night, everyone.